There's something on... I'm sorry, this one's over there.
Trustees, you ready? Want to make a motion to leave the executive session and go back into regular meeting?
I'll second that.
And we're back in the regular meeting at seven thirty-seven? Okay, next on the agenda, uh, meeting minutes, there's no meetings to, meeting minutes to approve. Fiscal officers report. Ms. Edwards, you have the floor.
I have nothing to report, um, it's just, uh, I'm done. That's it. It was for you guys, if you want to report or not.
Trustees, does anybody want to make a... There's actually no report to approve.
Still have to pull the bills. They're able to check some bill.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pay the payment for reports of the old same voices appropriation warrant.
Mr. Man, I'll second the motion. Roll call, Ms. Edwards.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McLovin.
Yes.
Old business.
Okay, so, uh, I remember it was very quiet, I got a little bit of flack, but the fire department didn't reverse the comment that they about two gentlemen that a committee and stuff was made. Uh, and so, I just want to kind of put a few things up for the, uh, record. Uh, there's an email sent out on, uh, the fifth month twentieth day by, uh, Mr. Wolf to the chief. Mr. Mann only had that you were instructed to, uh, form a committee, six members, for the creation of the specifications, uh, for this new enticker for Jefferson Township. And, um, I suggested following people would be appointed to the committee. Uh, this is your consume, fire chief, so the assistant fire chief, I don't think he was involved, two firefighters, a mechanic, believe, and one trustee. And, um, so I was just curious, does anybody know how many meetings, the committee was formed? And, um, they produced a ninety-two page, uh, document that was sent out for our RP, that we got two bids on. Does anybody know how many man, Mr. Mann, there were meetings were there, did we have to make this document? You remember?
I was at, uh, one meeting.
Well, and that's where I want to go, because I, I got a little bit of backlash, because I said that, but in talking to the people that were there, they didn't know they were at a committee. They knew they were at a meeting. And so that's where the miscommunication went, that I got trouble for, because it was a meeting, not, and they were said to start up a committee to meet, as definition of a committee, if you have a committee, you can go back and forth, you can discuss things, in one meeting, it's hard to come up with a ninety-six page document. There's a letter from, uh, Steve Wolf, uh, any quotes from vendors, from Chief Lutz of the void, that said, you could, you, you are free to use specifications, old specifications, so that what was done. This is an exact copy of one that was sent to Chief, uh, Lutz back in the day. I pulled his emails up, and this is an exact, exact copy of one that was sent in, uh, a long time ago. But I just want to, I just want to put a that muddy water up a little bit, that there was a committee made up, I made, I made accusations that the guys weren't on the committee, but they only had one meeting, and there wasn't the, uh, it wasn't fair to be on. It actually didn't make.
Now, there, there were more than one meeting. I said I didn't want to.
Okay, how many were there?
I ain't, I can't answer that. I've never met before.
Okay.
So the template for the specs, that, are you disputing the template for the specs?
No, no, not at all. No, just a verbiage of whether it was committee, or that did, no, no, I'm not. No, that was probably who do that, um, no, I'm not.
Does this have anything to do with the email exchange with Wolf and the attorneys about taking him to Raleigh to, uh, fire truck down there?
No, we can, we can discuss that too, though, that does, this has to do with that. This has to do with, this is before that, this was before that, was after the RRP was made, this was made, this was the making of the RRP. Made for all new business?
We're on old business.
Oh, okay, well, I should know that too. You ready? Okay, uh, other old business, we've had issues, um, well, I don't know if it was discussed last week. We discussed the payroll issues last week, is that old business or new business? Okay, so then, uh, we'll, we'll classify that, new business. Uh, under old business, I tried to make this up last week, and told me I supposed to, I did it the wrong time. So there was a, we bought a, I heard the receipt or someplace, we, we bought a new cut-off saw from Buckeye, um, to the tune of just a hair under a thousand dollars. And we have one. I was just curious, who okayed the purchase of another thousand dollar cut-off saw when we owned one, and why didn't we not, we used one at a time? Do we know why we bought another one? Give me a little poppy bop on that.
It's my understanding that the one we have does not work, or it's not reliable.
Uh, it, it, it's worked in the past. So, I was just, I was just curious, and that's a little bit seven hundred fifty dollar limit, uh, I was just curious why we bought it, like, that's just, to me, it's a little bit wasting money. And then, else on back to the news, um, so you didn't, you guys should know that I sprayed, I sprayed again. Um, to finish my spraying, I see a receipt, I, I saw a payment for a backpack sprayer and, uh, a jug of herbicide that you bought Jim a year ago. Where is that? I need that to do some spraying.
It's on the road garage.
Is that the old road garage or the new road garage?
I don't know, they moved everything around, and I haven't, uh, checked it.
So it's not your house, it's the road garage?
Well, you're welcome to search my garage, if that's what you're accusing me of, Mr. Laufman. Any other old business?
I believe, who else?
I have, I have comment, well, it's, it's been in charge to this UAM email, not UAM particularly, but, uh, security issue that Mr. Wolf sent you guys an email, and put in everybody's package, that wasn't, um, because I wasn't privy to this, but my name was mentioned, and it has not been complying, and there was a breach, uh, there was a breach two months ago in the system, and he put my name as not complying. I don't know where he got that information from, but he needs to, uh, put his facts properly on the paper, and I'm getting tired of him making false accusations about me. He doesn't even know who complied or what, he thinks he knows everything, but he doesn't, and, and he can't say that Buckeye stated it, because I spoke with Buckeye on this issue. And I wish that you guys would fix this situation for him to stop spreading falsehoods about me. I am in compliance, and I want you guys to know that, in this email he sent you guys. I'm sick of seeing stuff like this, and it's upsetting, and I'm tired of seeing it. If he needs clarification, he needs to talk to me, and stop spreading falsehoods about me.
Thank you.
It's in your folder, and it's today, August sixteenth.
Oh.
Twenty, and she has to, twenty twenty-one, he sent it to you, Mr. McGuire, and Trustee Mann, and he sent it to Legal, Daniel Peters.
Well, we've got three employees, Buckeye, because of all the cyber security issues.
I just told you.
Moved this up to VPNs, all the three employees, which include you, Mr. Laufman.
I, I told you, you guys don't, you just taking that word from Mr. Wolf, he doesn't know everything, why don't you talk to Buckeye? Because I've already spoken with Buckeye, and this issue has been resolved for me. And I'm telling you one more time, get these falsehoods taken away, and stop having them, I don't want to call him a liar, but he's a big liar. He doesn't know everything, and you guys just take everything he says to heart, and this is, uh, this is false. This email is false, and I can take it in the court on it. I'm tired of him, I'm going to file a complaint on him, and it brings if it continues. And I'm sick of it. And I'm filing against you guys, because you are the trustees that have control of it, and you will be included in the suit. Because he's your employee.
Okay, any other old business? All right, trustees, new business.
New business, um, this puzzle of the fire department, I made, I spent some time and made a job description for our administrator. Uh, so I just want you to look at it, and make a decision on it tonight, but, uh, I'll pass it now, and, uh, if you please take the time to read it, and make additions, subtractions, I give it to you, your documents, so you can change it, there's some problems here with you and, uh, Trustee Mann. But we need to, we forgot to do that beginning of the year, we kind of didn't do all things we need to do beginning of the year, we signed all paperwork, we had, uh, some bad meetings or whatever, but, um, the only, uh, job description for our administrator is what is in the Ohio advice code. And, uh, this will be more to his position, he's doing, you know, several jobs, and just need to get down to paper what he's doing, and, uh, this job description is, so. Take some time to read that, and we'll go from there.
Any other new business, trustees?
Yes, so that was talked about payroll issues, and I saw some emails, as they go, I don't know about crackle, but I saw an email from her about how we mispaid, we mispaid some employees, and, um, you know, people are not out there for their health, they're out there for their check. You go up, get up every morning, alarm clock goes off, and you go. And we got guys that do that for us, and at the end of this story was, one guy got all night deposit, he didn't go to rest for once. Wow, that's nice. The other guy, definitely next in the, out medical list of names, his hours went to the guy in front of him, this guy was expecting a check for a hundred change, but didn't get it. And then he's told he has to wait till the next pay slide to get paid. That is not right, you should not let that happen. Now, who made that response, that, that call on that, Mr. Wolf, is that you? But you do not, when a man works, you cut him a check ASAP for his mistime. I still agree with that. So, if you go on that a little bit farther, I know back when I was over roads, we had, there is, don't we still, maybe you know Tracy, don't we still pay for, have a software program where you clock in on computers, you clock out on the computers?
You didn't have that in the road when you were over.
I'm sorry?
You didn't have it, fire department had it.
Yes.
Yes, yes, I, when I was in the road department, the, the guy signed in, yes, he did, in the road garage.
It was computer number fifty, fifty-fifty.
You asked me a question.
Okay, anyway, anyway, so we have the software to do this.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do, we're paying for it still.
So if we don't, we need to get it.
That's what the.
So let's do away with the human error problem in payroll. And so, nobody gets paid, you don't pay the wrong person, when you work, you get paid, we get the benefits correct. Um, we need to quit having errors of payroll multiple times per pay period. I really think we need to make an effort to go back and have whatever system we had, you, you saying we didn't have one, whatever, you know, I don't know what to believe, but we need to get those, the systems out there. Uh, if, by every pay, every employee out, employer out there today has systems that they use to take care of your time. ADP, Paycor, there's different systems out there, you clock in, it's all computerized, you, you clock in on a computer, and you clock out, and it, it does all that time. So I think we need to move forward into, uh, getting that taken care of. I know, but no time to talk about Paycor, kind of, yeah, Paycor provides us a time clock device. Because we, we start right at the top with, with Steve and, and Mr. Wright, we start right at the top, and have everybody do it. Next video. Any more new business, we asked one more time, tell one more thing.
Any more? Go ahead, are you done with that issue?
Yeah, yeah, so you guys can make any comments? I guess so. Okay, so the next one, um, I was curious, Mr. Wolf, um, under what Ohio advice code, resolution of law? Or maybe you had one of those trustees tell you, where do you get permission, where do you get, this is a free country, there's free speech. Where do you get being able to tell police, they can't talk to the police, you can't talk to people?
I don't know what you're referencing.
I'm sorry?
I do not know what you're referencing.
That you get told in police in the past, they can't talk to the police?
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
That's not.
Listen, listen.
Well, that's.
I think they had that passed, and police told me that, she comes to, she told them that.
Trustees, this is a, this is a executive session thing?
I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to.
But you can, but you can talk to employees and lie on me and tell them that I did payroll, when you've been doing payroll clearly. Is that a second obsession too? And that's why I got screwed up, because I screwed it up? Okay, I talked to the guy personally, because he was told that you told him that I was the one that screwed up payroll, you didn't say those exact words.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And I did not screw up payroll, because I had nothing to do with payroll.
That's, that's, I, I have no comment.
Yeah, because you know it's true.
No.
I, you know, I, I am tired of you lying on me and telling people. I talked to the guy, and he told me what you told him. I, I don't need to hear it from you, I'm telling you, I don't need to hear any rebuttal from you, you just said it wasn't true, and you didn't want to talk about it.
So is there ORC number or what?
He doesn't know your ORCs, he just, yeah, about ORC, but he has no clue what ORC is. No more than knows the hand, uh, on the back of his hand, just talking crap, he's nothing but a liar.
You got any more information on this, or is this an insight?
Any more, any more information on what?
What are we talking about here?
I just told you. Pay, payroll was done by mistake.
I'm talking about payroll, but Laufman's talking about an issue, uh, looks like changing man.
So, I need to, I guess I gotta bring excellent police in and have them state facts of what they were told?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm just going with what I've been told. Can't talk to trustee of law.
All right, any other new business?
Um, I have some issues. Cyber security. I also was told that is Mr. Mann's area of cybersecurity. There's been a survey I sent out to you, are you trustee, that has to be done by fifteenth September? Um, you trustee need to decide who's going to fill out that survey for cybersecurity. That is not my responsibility, I'm not, I'm not a secretary for this trustee, and I don't, and I'm not involved in cybersecurity. So someone will have to determine who's going to fill out that form for, um, that's due fifteenth September. And I sent you guys the email on that.
Any other new business?
Well, to answer that question, I see that, that's very important to get done. Who, I mean, I just vaguely, did you guys look at, Mr. Mann, you look at, I, I just vaguely looked at the questions, and they are pretty in depth, there's quite a few pages of them. Somebody needs to grab that bull by horns and take care of it, or we're going to lose our cybersecurity insurance, correct? Am I correct in saying that, guys? We have to answer that questionnaire to keep our own insurance in cybersecurity, correct?
I don't know that for a fact, but the OTA conference meeting that we had two weeks ago, they said that could be a possibility. Or your rates will go up because on that particular coverage, if you don't respond, because of penalty. So one way or another, the township is impacted.
And that's due by the fifteenth of September, our next meeting is like the seventh? So you need to make a decision now, because if you wait till then, I'll be the person who will be, got to give it to you, or we can answer pages and pages of questions.
Everybody got that, his email.
Yes.
So, look at it and see, I'll probably end up with it, so, because it's technology.
You gonna answer questions?
As far as I know, I'm over technology.
Well, that's not here, it says legal security, and that's under Mr. Mann's job responsibilities.
Okay.
Security is the building keys in the security system.
Okay. So it's technological, computerism. Well, then, your job, uh, apologize for, for, uh, Mr. Mann.
So if you're going to answer those questions, Jim, then you're going to pass it around, so I can look at the answers, and we'll send it in as a, as all the responsible for that, so I'll probably see your answers, um, on those questions, when we turn it in.
All right, I'll call to you on the ground.
Thank you.
So speaking of, um, speaking of security, uh, to the building, what's going on with the gate, the keys to the building, and all that stuff? We got, we finally got our alarm and the code to our wing, and we're now separate from the building. But now what about the seventy-seven thousand dollars we spent to, to get a keyless system in all our buildings in the township, that nothing's been done with it?
Is the alarm machine complete?
No. The system was set on Monday, it failed, it failed Tuesday, it failed, uh, twice today, on, on Tuesday. So the new system is not operational, Hank said you'll have to notify us when it's here.
Okay, so the, um, security, the gates and all that stuff ties into this problem. But, but my question is not even that, the problem is, is that gate would not be able to open with the latch on it, and it's supposed, it's got a push button when you go out, there's a latch that goes over the thing, that system is not finished, even the gate on the system, yeah.
Right.
And the doors won't open automatically, what's the point of having a keyless system if it's going to not open automatically? All that stuff is not in there yet, on there yet.
Do we handle it?
That, that was not part of the, of the bids.
Well, that's.
Well, so what's the point of having a keyless system if you still got to touch it?
Well, again, the trustees made that decision, they made the purchase.
I'm not trying to blame you, I'm just, so that black box out there, that's a swipe card, right, that's a swipe, uh, outside the door? What is, what is that black thing?
A key fob. You will get a key fob to put on your key.
Okay, so, okay, so it's different, same process, different app, okay, you, we'll find out the words. So key fob instead of card, so, but, but down there, I'm going to do that, that'll dislodge the door, and I just pull on the door. Okay with that?
It doesn't, no, because, well, not for me, because it's hard for me to get with my hands full, with the cane, I can't get in and out that gate like that. Right now, it's a real problem, because I have to be able to unlock it. So if you seen the gate open, it's because I leave it open, because it's a pain for me to go in and out, but when I leave, I close it.
Well, we'll get to that activation, of what can be done.
You're speaking of the, the chamber gate, or the door in the building?
The chamber gate.
The chamber, okay, okay.
I mean, because in the winter and everything, it's a hazard, because I have to walk off the sidewalk, because the gate is so big, you can't open it up. I have to get close, and then I have to walk off. You understand, I have to pull, I have to pull it out.
On, on the inside, what's that yellow button?
It's an emergency release.
It just releases it, but it doesn't.
Okay, I got you, I got you, you stay.
But the county left the, uh, the horseshoe in there for now, because it's not activated.
Because the battery's not working.
Yeah, they wanted to make sure the wind didn't blow the, the gate open.
Okay.
Because the county owns the gate, we don't.
And that's what they had offered, is another option, is taking the gate out totally, if it didn't, they had offered that option, but that wasn't.
That's an option, that's still an option, if you want that, trustees.
Okay, any more new business? Going once, going twice. All right, resolutions. Twenty-one dash oh five four, the next resolution, does that sound correct?
No, I thought it was, probably that, how did you do that now, because I thought it was five one.
From the agenda, the last one.
Well, that was the last one, and that's correct.
Because we went on to fifty-three.
I thought I posted all of them, but I didn't find them all, so that's fine, four, oh five four.
All right, resolution number twenty-one dash zero five four. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby agree to increase the expenditure for remodeling Fire Station Fifty-nine bathrooms from forty-seven six fifty-four to fifty-three three sixty-three, and fund the entire pod, fire, entire project for fire plan code twenty-one eleven dash seven sixteen dash seven twenty dash zero one zero zero. Move to adopt resolution twenty-one dash oh five four.
I'll second motion.
Mr. Man. Discussion.
Yes, I have, because there's not that much funds in that line item. I'm sorry, but I don't have the, I don't have. So when we give the resolution, the funds? It's okay if you want to use it, but you're going to have to move some money from somewhere to cover that, and we have to do another resolution before you can accept this resolution. We don't have to plan it, but there's. And again, I can't tell you how much is currently in there, because I'm not sure if they used some money out of that line item already, but it was only, I'm pretty sure it was only forty thousand in that line item.
On eight eleven, trustees, there was sixty thousand in that account.
Well, then I can't tell you how much.
The UAM report that, that I had that shows that, this resolution was based off of that date. Um, so I'm not sure where the fire department would have spent any money on the buildings.
And do you have, have you been in contact with them in doing deals or anything for the bill?
I asked, asked the chief about it. Um, so, that there's sixty thousand, it was there.
Well, then I suggest that before you pass the resolution, you find out how much is actually in that before you pass it. If I hadn't had this resolution before, at the meeting at six o'clock, I feel very glad it was funded for you.
Well, trustees, I'm not sure where that money went, um, but you can always do transfers here while we're on, to make this resolution go through.
You don't know how much is in there, you don't know how much to transfer.
That's because you don't allow us to access.
That, I have nothing to do with that. I have nothing to do with that. You got, if I give you a password and you don't access it, you lock yourself out of this system. I have nothing to do with me.
Now, you won't give up the software.
I have nothing to do with you. You have the software put on the server. I have nothing to do with that. The software is on the server, you have access from all your computers.
Trustees, Mr. McGuire, Buckeye today signed the disc, has to update the server. The server locks out each time that the, doesn't receive the update. Yes. John Noah made a proposal working with UAN that if fiscal officer would release the written communication to the UAN to allow Buckeye to receive the updates. They can do it to your server, which will work on all your systems. But we've been shut out of the UAN now for at least three or four months.
Nobody forgot that information to me.
So trustees, that's why I have it in your packet today to give you an update on those projects and let you know that you need access to records.
Still I receive that information, I cannot do anything.
This is, uh, you know, sort of.
So it looks like it's fixable, right? Would you say, Steve?
I'm sorry?
It's fixable.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Today, you, so Buckeye today, you went away, they need to.
Because the old way was they had to come get the disc from Ms. Edwards and then have to make a point.
She doesn't know that. She hasn't been told that. You just found that out, so we got to communicate that in a nice way and, and get Buckeye to be able to have access to that. So you made your remarks.
Correct.
So one question about this resolution.
So let's go back to the funding.
Okay.
Because I think that's what you guys were working on. So, well then, if these aren't accurate, then it's up to you trustees to do what you want to do. The funding is there in the fire fund. There's plenty of unspent, unallocated money or unencumbered money that could be transferred to cover this entire cost. So you can go forward with it. You just have to determine at a later date where the funds come from.
We just postpone to the next meeting, table to the next meeting and get the code.
Well, you table it, you put the project behind it another two weeks. And the people want the firehouse.
It's been, it's been postponed for years.
But that's the fault of the past fire chiefs. Trustees want this thing now.
Part of these changes, Mr. McGough, and which, over facilities.
Trustees though, you're always blaming on somebody else with the trustees.
They went, uh, ran.
Not the fire department, it's the trustees that are the decision maker.
How many, all this side action, you guys decided you got corners, didn't make code. So it's going to cost us more.
No, you're fooling me. We didn't build anything. We just took things out. We didn't do any, we didn't build anything that you have to take back out. You fool of a manure.
Then there's one part in the ground and where to come from.
Okay, so, um, the whole project, back in the day before this was awarded to, whoever it's awarded to, did we get three bids? And if we did, we're on the other two bid.